Hi. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Hold on just a second here.
Kenmore City Councils now in session. If you will, oh yeah, are you ready, Kelly?
I believe so. So I am going to show a little video for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, and I'm going to call for the flag salute now. So if you're ready.
I'm ready.
I'm ready. So, flag salute, please.
Let's see here, I'm so sorry. Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm not seeing it. I had it ready.
You're not.
And the clip is not.
It's on your computer.
It is.
Have you got the email?
I do. Please hold just one momento and I will get this up. Okay, here we go.
All right.
So. Can you see that?
We do.
All right.
A Gilegiens to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. For which it stands. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
All right. Next item on the agenda then is the roll call. Kelly, if you'd please.
Councilmember, okay. Councilmember, okay. Okay, Councilmember Curtis. Councilmember Curtis. Is he still with us? Councilmember Curtis.
Present.
Okay, Councilmember Marshall.
Present.
Councilmember Shrubnik, here. Mayor Baker.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Here.
Councilmember File.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. If there are no objections, the agenda will stand approved as written. All right, the next item on the agenda is citizen comments. We are going to try these live tonight, and there will be two ways. The one way was to submit the written comment by five, and the second way is to use the Raise Your Hand function in Zoom and let the clerk know that you wish to be called on. You will have three minutes to talk about what is on your mind and things that are important to the community. So, will the clerk please call the first person?
All right, so I'm not sure how to say this name, but I'm gonna go ahead and unmute this person and they can say their name and address, and I'll start the three-minute timer.
Great.
Go ahead. This is Bo Dean.
This is Elizabeth Mooney. I have the video on. Can you hear me?
Hi Elizabeth, I can hear you. Can you council here, Elizabeth Mooney?
Yes.
We don't see you, but we hear you.
I'm not hearing anything.
Okay, I'm gonna just, it looks like she's on mute.
Does that work? Is that better?
Oh, we hear yes.
Is that better? Can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. This is very new and so, good evening, council. It's a sobering new world coronavirus pandemic Zoom Kenmore Council meetings. It's, you know, thank you. We're all doing this together. Wasn't it a gorgeous day today? Wind blowing, new leaves dazzling in the heights of the trees. It seemed we could see far into the distance. We can see more easily into the distance because our air is cleaner. Last week was the 50th anniversary of Earth Day. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Due to the governor's stay-home, stay-healthy order, we have enjoyed much better air quality than we have had in a long time in Kenmore and the North Lake, Washington area. This is at least in part due to the closure of the asphalt and cement plant in Kenmore. As you know, many citizens over the many years have complained that that facility should not pollute our air, especially since it is not regulated according to modern health standards. For the last few weeks, we have had the pleasure of enjoying walks through Kenmore on the Burt Gilman Trail, right next to that facility, without the overwhelming, unhealthy, nauseating smell and health concerns that go along with that facility. The COVID-19 pandemic has put a greater emphasis on the importance of air quality and public health and safety. On April 17, 2020, the New York Times, Science Times published new research linking air pollution to higher Corona death rates. You can look that up if you want, I can send it to you, but it is an analysis of 3,080 counties in the US where researchers at the Harvard University TH Chan School of Public Health found that higher levels of the tiny dangerous particles in air known as PM 2.5 were associated with higher death rates from COVID-19 disease. We would appreciate the City Council of Kenmore working to keep our air quality clean for public health and safety, now that we've had the chance to experience Kenmore under blue skies. We appreciate the city has the Microsoft air monitors, but what will those do to keep our skies blue and our air healthy? All that would be good for our economy and our environment. It would help make Kenmore a much more attractive place for citizens and visitors to enjoy our North Lake, Washington life. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mooney.
All right, so next I have Tracy Bonisiewski. Tracy, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. You are up.
Tracy Bonisiewski, Kenmore. Thank you, honorable councilmembers, for stepping up for our community during this tropical coronavirus pandemic. Our community needs strong progressive leadership more than ever, and I am grateful to each of you for your service. As we move through this round of time, I ask you to center the health of our environment and climate in all of your decisions. A degraded environment and rapidly warming climate are threat multipliers that must be addressed in conjunction with events such as the COVID-19 pandemic. There is much environmental and climate work to be done in Kenmore, from restoring our watershed, including our wetlands and the life-bearing rivers and streams that run to Lake Washington, to strengthening regulations to protect and grow our tree canopy, to making sure that the air we breathe is clean. I miss holding habitat restoration events at Wallace Swamp Creek Park. I have plans for so many stewardship projects for our community that are currently in a holding pattern in my heart. I'm so excited for the time to gather in community to cut Himalayan blackberry canes and dig out root balls again. In the meantime, I have turned back to an air quality concern in our community. It has come to my attention that the Kenmore Ready Mix Plant has been grandfathered in under old emission standards and therefore is allowed to form more pollution into our air than is permitted by air quality regulations. Poor air quality is a threat to the health and well-being of Kenmore residents, and it's likely to exacerbate the harmful effects of diseases like COVID-19. I will be spending the next several weeks learning more. I ask you to put this issue on radar and be ready to take action to ensure clean air for all Kenmore residents. Thank you for your attention and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Benisiewski.
So I do not have anybody else that's raised their hand. I do have 10 or so attendees that have not raised their hand. If anybody who wants to speak, please use the raise hand feature, and I'll be glad to call on you.
All right, if there's nobody else wishing to speak.
Nope.
I will declare the public comment closed, and we will go on to the next item, which is a presentation, Kenmore City State Government Relations Report 2020 in the Legislative Session with Shelley Helder and Brianna Murray and Gordon Thomas Honeywell. Ladies.
Good evening. It is great to be participating with you all virtually. We have a PowerPoint presentation for you, and I am going to bring it up by sharing my screen, and then Shelley and I are going to coordinate as we go through the presentation. So, hold on one minute. As I bring the slide deck. Is everyone able to see the slide deck?
Yes.
Yes.
Wonderful. Okay, so, let's see here. Shelley, do you want to kick us off and then we'll go back and forth from there?
Yes. So, evening, everyone. I am Shelley Helder, and as was previously mentioned, Brianna and I are the city's state government affairs consultants. We're pleased to be joining you this evening for a report on the 2020 legislative session. Our presentation is going to focus on the city's top priorities, as outlined on the city's legislative agenda and the policy statements document. We won't have time to review all the issues that came up during session that impact cities, but in your packets is a comprehensive written report that goes into much more detail on all the bills that were introduced to the session that have an impact on the city and where the city weighed in on each of those bills. So if you would like more information, I'd encourage you to check out that report. And typically, we'd encourage you to ask questions as we go along, but given the remote nature of this presentation, we'll plan to take all questions at the end. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brianna.
Great. And before we dive into the specific city legislative priorities, we thought it would be helpful to provide some context for the 2020 legislative session and start with just an overview of what occurred broadly. Some of this will be a repeat from the presentation you received prior to the beginning of the 2020 legislative session, but it's a good reminder. So the 2020 legislative session was the second year of the two-year legislative biennium. The legislature operates on that two-year cycle, and as the second year, it was scheduled to be a short legislative session, scheduled to last 60 days. Democrats maintain the majority in both the House and the Senate, and as a short session, the legislature focused on adopting supplemental operating capital and transportation budgets. That supplemental budget, what that means is that they're going in in the middle of their fiscal year. The state operates on a two-year fiscal year. They're going in in the middle of their fiscal year to make amendments to budgets that were adopted in 2019. In addition to their budget work, all bills from 2019 automatically carry over and are reintroduced in 2020, and additional bills are introduced. That means that, oops. That means that 3,773 bills were considered. Of those, 386 bills passed the legislature, and then the governor vetoed 24 of those in full and partially vetoed 14 of those. And we'll get into the governor's actions a little bit further as we go through the slides, but those vetoes largely reflect actions that the governor took in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, which really was ramping up in the final weeks of the legislative session. So much of the legislature's work did not reflect the current times that we're living in today. I'm going to start by providing just a brief overview of each of the supplemental budgets, starting with the operating budget. So again, as a reminder, the state operates on a two-year fiscal cycle, so their fiscal year runs July 1 of 2019 to June 30 of 2021, and they're coming in in the middle of that cycle to make amendments. The operating budget funds all state agency operations, including the K through 12 system. At the beginning of the legislative session, the operating budget looked really healthy in terms of revenue collections. In February, $1.5 billion in new revenue was forecasted to be coming in during this fiscal year, and that's all new money that then the legislature would have available to it in order to spend as part of a supplemental. And the supplemental budget that was adopted by the legislature was smaller than originally anticipated. When we first saw proposals come out of the House and the Senate, they were each proposing to spend right around $1 billion. Inevitably, the final budget that they adopted spent $961 million rather than a full $1 billion. However, between the time the legislature approved their final budget and the two-week time that the governor has to evaluate and veto the bill, it became very clear that the COVID-19 epidemic was going to have a significant impact on revenue collections. And so the governor used his veto authority to further veto an additional $235 million of that $961 million in expenditures. And that still resulted in an operating budget, supplemental operating budget, that spent an additional $726 million. We're now hearing that revenue collections are coming in significantly lower than anticipated, and that the state would be looking at somewhere in the ballpark of a $5 billion revenue shortfall within their fiscal year. And so they're, much like cities are, looking at how to reduce their revenues and maybe coming in for a special session in order to take those actions. So, in summary, what started out as a pretty rosy revenue picture quickly has declined into being a fairly bleak revenue picture for the operating budget. The capital budget also operates on that same fiscal year cycle. It funds bricks and mortar construction and community projects really throughout the state. We knew going into the 2020 session that it was going to be a very limited supplemental budget. The 2019 legislature only reserved about $70 million in bond revenue for the development of a 2020 budget. They were able to identify an additional $19.8 million by adjusting some various cash accounts, and finally adopted a total supplemental capital budget of $89.9 million. They gave priority to funding local projects that did not receive funding in 2019, and in general, no project received a significant amount of money. Most projects received a very small dollar amount, and that was a theme throughout what was what ended up being a very limited supplemental capital budget. The third budget is the supplemental transportation budget. Again, the supplemental transportation budget goes in and makes amendments mid-fiscal year. One of the big things that changed from the 2019 legislative session to 2020 is that voters approved Initiative 976. That resulted a $453 million revenue shortfall within the current fiscal year. This budget was thought to be the most challenging of the three budgets because of that $453 million revenue shortfall. In order to provide the legislature with flexibility on how to address that revenue shortfall, the governor paused all project contracts that were currently underway, and that allowed the legislature some ultimate flexibility in addressing that shortfall. They resolved that shortfall by pushing out projects that were delayed or canceled in order to balance that 2019-21 budget. But what that did is it created a long-term revenue shortfall in the future years of the Connecting Washington package. It did, however, allow all paused project contracts to proceed forward on schedule. What that does is it resolves the transportation budget shortfall in the immediacy, but it does create increased pressure to adopt a transportation revenue package. Now, again, since the legislature's work on all of this, there's been a significant decline in gas tax revenues, again, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, and that will certainly shape not just the development of a transportation revenue package, but how revenue shortfalls are handled in the transportation budget moving forward. And I think, right there, right here, I'm going to transition it back over to Shelley for a few slides, and have her talk a bit about your legislative priorities. The one comment that I'll make is I would just encourage you all to think about the legislative cycle as a two-year cycle and to look at our successes over the course of two years, because that is how our legislators view the cycle. So Shelley, I'll turn it over to you.
Great. Yes, and I think Brianna really highlighted what I wanted to communicate with this slide is that to focus on looking at legislative successes in a two-year cycle, since that's how the budget or the state budgets. And so as a reminder, in 2019, the city was successful in securing $155,000 for improvements at Twin Springs Park, and was also awarded two grants from the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program, and that was in large part due to Senator Fox's work, which ensured that the program was funded at a level that included the city's projects. So in the first year of the biennium, the city received over $1 million from the state's capital budget. So in preparing for the 2020 session, we had kind of two goals. The first was to continue work that wasn't completed in the first half of the biennium, and the second was to begin laying the groundwork for 2021. Next slide. So falling into that first category of finishing work from the first year of the biennium, the city, one of the city's top legislative priorities was to secure capital funding for the Lake Washington Loop Trail. And so at the city, this is more commonly known as the Oneida Drive pedestrian and bicycle safety project. And because the state has separate budgets for capital projects and transportation projects, bike ped projects more commonly are funded from the state's transportation budget. So we strategically framed this project to be more recreational, which makes it eligible for capital budget funding, because even before the passage of 976, we knew that the transportation budget was extremely constrained and that we could be more competitive and more successful if we pursued funding from the capital budget. So that's why we framed it as the Lake Washington Loop Trail. So leading up to the 2020 session, we arranged for Senator Fox to come out to the project site and do a tour and help him visualize the improvements that the city has planned for that stretch of road. We worked with the city staff and legislative delegation to submit a $1 million request in both chambers, and we knew that this was an ambitious request. As Brianna said, it's a supplemental year, and so it became clear early in session that the full $1 million was not going to be possible. But in large part due to Senator Fox's work, the Senate budget proposal included $200,000 for the city's project, and ultimately, that amount was included in the final budget. And again, this outcome would not have been possible if not for Senator Fox really advocating for this project and pushing to have this funding included in the capital budget.
And I'll just add, before we move on to the next slide, that several of the projects that were allocated funding this year received far less than 200,000. So while 200,000 is significantly less than what we requested of the 1 million, it is a fairly generous appropriation when compared to what other communities throughout the state received.
Yep, good point. So the next city priority was a request for a transfer of $6 million from the state Route 522 West B improvements to the West San Mamish River Bridge, and this was a critical request since the bids for the bridge replacement came in higher than anticipated. And although it seems like it should have been a fairly straightforward request, it was a little risky, and so our advocacy was strategic. The risk came because funding for both the West B and the bridge replacement were included in the 2015 Connecting Washington package. And as part of that package, there was an agreement that if any project came in under cost, or if there was a reduction to the scope of the project, that the savings would go back to the state, and 50% would be dedicated towards maintenance and preservation, and 50% would be dedicated towards the next round of statewide investments. So by requesting $6 million from State Route 522 improvements be allocated to the West Sand Bridge project, there was the potential that it would flag the funding for budget writers to take and either use to fill holes in the budget or have it apply to the policies that had previously been agreed upon. So because of this risk, we strategically submitted this request only in the House, where one of our delegation members, Representative Valdez, is on the Transportation Budget Cabinet and was part of the team that developed the House's proposed transportation budget. Additionally, we paired this request with an offer to return the $500,000 the state had previously allocated towards a study of an under-over. To proceed with that study at this time. And so rather than have the funds sit in an account unused, we communicated to the budget writers to let them know that we wouldn't be able to proceed forward with that study in the near term. Ultimately, the combination of these strategies were successful, and again, in large part, Representative Valdez and his work. The supplemental budget does include the transfer of $6 million from, or to, the West Mamish Bridge project, and those funds are available in the 2123 biennium. Next slide. So staying on the topic of transportation, in 2019, there were initial conversations about the development of the upcoming or the next transportation revenue package. Senator Steve Hobbs, who's the Chair of the Senate Transportation Committee, developed a proposal referred to as Forward Washington. Because we knew that these conversations would continue in 2020, we encouraged the city to identify the top priorities you'd like to have included in the next package. And the city's top priority is resources or revenue tools to support maintenance and preservation, with specific emphasis on sidewalk preservation, using 61st Avenue sidewalk replacement as an example. The Association of Washington Cities had a similar priority and advanced legislation to provide local revenue options to cities and counties. House Bill 2362 and Senate Bill 6672 were companion bills that would have given cities additional authority to increase sales tax or utility tax or to implement a local gas tax. Both bills had favorable public hearings where we signed the city in support, and although neither bill passed this session, it did, the conversation created an opportunity to talk about the importance of local revenue tools in the next revenue package. Additionally, the Senate held a work session on an updated version of the 2019 Forward Washington proposal, and the city submitted written comment highlighting the fact that the funding that was included for local government grant programs was really appreciated, programs such as safe routes to schools, but there were no resources for cities to maintain the infrastructure they already have. So that was our big emphasis. This session was on the importance of maintenance and preservation tools and resources for cities. The last two priorities on the city's 2020 legislative agenda were sustainable fiscal structure for cities and support of Kenmore Air's request for buoys on Lake Washington. Representative Jerry Paulette has become the champion for local governments, and that's really a role he's grown into since becoming Chair of the House Local Government Committee. He sponsored House Bill 2145, which would have removed the 1% property tax cap to allow for, to growth of that based on population and inflation. to allow for to growth of that based on population and inflation, and then establishing a new cap at 3%. And in all honesty, we did not expect the bill to pass in this short supplemental budget year. But we did hope for a little bit more of a dialogue on this topic. And despite Representative Paulette really beating the drum, there was not a lot of movement this session. So that it's something that we plan to continue working on with him over the interim and in preparation for next year. Lastly, the city supported Kenmore Air's request for buoys on Lake Washington during the 2019 session and anticipated the request to be renewed in 2020, but there was really limited opportunity in the transportation and capital budget, so this request did not advance. In addition to the city's legislative agenda, Kenmore adopts a policy statement document, and that guides our engagement on a variety of other topics that comes up throughout the course of a session. Again, the written report covers these in much greater detail, but I did want to highlight a few for you this evening. The first is Tax Increment Financing, or TIF, and Local Revitalization Financing, or LRF, which are economic development tools that were priorities for the Association of Washington Cities. True Tax Increment Financing requires a constitutional amendment. So House Bill 2778 and House Joint Resolution 4212 were introduced by Representative Pat Sullivan, who's one of the leaders of the House Democratic Caucus. These bills both had public hearings in the House Finance Committee and were voted out of committee, which was, I think, surprising for many to see that it had support enough to get out of committee. Unfortunately, they did die early in session. House Bill 2804 was sponsored by Representative Davina Duer from Bockel and would have funded a new round of investments for communities to receive awards up to $1 million for 25 years, so $1 million a year for 25 years, which would allow them to bond, to build infrastructure that would increase sales and property tax revenue. This bill was, made it further than any proposal of its kind has in recent years, passed out of the House with really strong bipartisan support, but died in the final days of the legislative session. And I think if there's anything to be taken away as a result of the advocacy on this issue this past session is that there is recognition and support wanting to recognizing that cities are looking for additional resources to spur economic development, and particularly in the arena of infrastructure. As has been the case for the last several years, there were dozens of bills introduced on the topic of affordable housing. But I just want to focus on one for this evening. House Bill 1590 authorizes cities and counties to councilmanically impose 1/10 of 1% of sales tax increase to fund affordable housing and behavioral health facilities. This authority exists in current law, but it requires voter approval. This bill gives cities the option to either go voter approval or councilmanic route. Counties will have until September 30th of this year to impose the tax. And if they don't, or if they don't impose it in full, cities can impose the whole or the remainder. And that bill did pass, which is why it's listed there in bold. So in accordance with the city's policy statements, we supported House Bill 2610, also sponsored by Representative Davina Duer, which would have required the owner of a mobile home park who is looking to sell or lease the property to provide an opportunity for the tenants, either as a coalition or for the Department of Commerce or the Housing Finance Commission to have the first opportunity to purchase the property. And this bill passed in the House but eventually died in the Senate. I would expect to see something like this return in the future. And then lastly, House Bill 2641 was a bill that was brought forward by the City of Tacoma and authorizes cities along the Puget Sound and Lake Washington to provide passenger-only ferry service. And we didn't weigh in specifically on this proposal, but we were pleased that Lake Washington Cities now have this authority, since this bill has passed into law. Since it, we believe it may put pressure on King County to provide this service in the future, now that they know cities could provide it on their own. So I think with that, I will turn it back over to Brianna.
Sure, thank you, Shelley. And I mentioned this earlier, but we really just want to highlight it and provide a little bit more intel. But a potential special session is likely going to occur in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. As I mentioned, the legislature is facing a significant revenue shortfall within their own state budget, which may require them to come in and make amendments to that supplemental and to make a transfer out of their rainy day fund in order to make it through their fiscal year. As part of the discussion around special session, there is discussion about what can be done to protect state shared revenues. So there are several state accounts where funding is allocated to cities. We want to ensure that the state doesn't choose to reduce those accounts in any way. And what the state could perhaps proactively do to help cities, just today, the governor announced that there's going to be some of the federal funding allocated out to local governments in order to meet COVID-19 expenses. So seeing more of those types of actions of the state proactively helping cities through this tough time. So we'll certainly be in touch with city manager and city staff as that special session develops as we move into June and July. Beyond the special session that is likely, the, in November, the House, all members of the House and approximately half members of the Senate are up for reelection. Amongst those that are up for reelection, there were several that announced their retirement. So we're going to see a significant number of open seats in November, which means that we will have many new faces in the 2021 legislature. The other thing that will occur, start to occur in early 2021 is the redistricting process, where the legislature redraws the boundaries of each legislative district to ensure that equal amount of population is within each district. And so the outcome of the November 2020 elections will certainly influence and shape how that redistricting plays out throughout 2021. So all of that is context for what we see occurring throughout the end of this year, as well as moving into the 2021 session, which will be the beginning of the next two-year cycle. And the legislature will have to develop a 2123 budget. And that 2123 budget will likely still be experiencing the impacts of revenue reductions from COVID-19. So we wanted to provide that context as we think about things moving forward. A few notes, really want to extend a great amount of thanks to your legislative delegation. Our successes, the past biennium would not have been possible without Senator Frost, Representative Paulette, and Representative Valdez. And they do an excellent job of coordinating amongst each other with Senator Frost taking the lead on capital issues, Representative Valdez taking the lead on transportation issues, and Representative Paulette really standing out as a champion as Chair of the Local Government Committee on Local Government Issues. So they have all, in their own way, really championed different issues for the city of Kenmore. Lobbying, while you might think about it as primarily a session-only activity, is much more of a year-round activity, and even more so with the likelihood of a special session looming. So over the interim and in the months to follow, we will focus on fiscal sustainability for cities. So that state shared revenue component that we want to defend against, any cuts to, as well as moving the needle on the 1% property tax cap and other elements, and then also looking at transportation maintenance funding and funding for asphalt preservation. So those are the items that we will focus on moving forward as we look to 2021. And with that, I will stop and pause and see if there are any questions from others.
Let's, let's go down the line. It's probably easiest. Councilmember O'Kane, any questions? Councilmember O'Kane?
I'm muting. I'm sorry about that. No questions at this point. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Marshall, any questions?
No questions.
Councilmember Curtis, any questions?
No questions for me.
Councilmember Shabnik?
No questions.
Councilmember? Why has my mind gone totally blank?
Deputy Mayor Herbig and Councilor File.
Yeah, Councilmember File.
No questions. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
No questions.
And I don't have any questions. Anything you'd like to add in, in ending there, Ms. Taylor? Yes.
Yes, Ms. Taylor. I want to just add a personal comment, if I may. I think the mayor, as well aware as I think many of you on council are, in seven months pregnant and had several different pregnancy complications throughout this last session, and I just really want to extend a great amount of thanks to Shelley for stepping up in a really big way. And to the city manager and city staff and the mayor for just a lot of really great understanding and patience as I have worked through all of that. And so just a lot of appreciation for your understanding and Shelley for stepping up in a huge way.
Cheers. Yes. You're on the downward slope.
That's the hope.
That is, that is. Thank you. Thank you very much for all your work throughout the year. And you may have had some issues with the pregnancy, but we knew that you were there and we knew that you were you were taking care of things, so we really appreciate that. All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Some.
And I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent agenda stands approved. Next item on the agenda is Police Services Report and North Sound Radar update. Chief Moen and Brooke Butner. And we'll hear about the North Sound Radar program and yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Again, for those who don't know me, Brandon Moen, I started as the police chief about six months ago now. Certainly been a very interesting last few months, but I appreciate all the support that I've received, not only from the city manager, but also that the management team and the city staff. It's really been a smooth transition. I've really enjoyed my time. Let me go ahead and try to share my screen here. Okay. Is that coming through?
Yeah.
All right, great. So just a quick review of our agency. Currently, we have myself serving as the police chief, 11 patrol officers. We normally would have 12, which we'll discuss a little bit later, and as well as one detective. We continue to obviously provide 24/7 coverage. We always have two officers on regardless of day or night. There's always a minimum of two officers within the city of Kenmore patrolling. We work 10-hour shifts. There's a allows us to have an overlap between the busiest hours, which is typically in the early evening into late evening, between swing shift and graveyard. Continue to have a shared supervision agreement with Shoreline, so there's always a supervisor available nearby in Shoreline who supervises us for the rest of the week that I'm not there, essentially the 40 hours, the entire week minus the 40 hours that I'm there. As you know, continued contract Sheriff's Office provided police services for the area since the mid-1800s when the Sheriff's Office formed, and we continue to with the city since its incorporation. Really, there's a number of benefits conducted at Sheriff's Office, including this having a lot of number of officers to choose from. We get to go out and select who we want from the agency and select the ones that we believe would be the best fit. Not only to serve Kenmore, but to fit with our team. The officers are dedicated to our city. We obviously drive Kenmore police cars, Kenmore uniforms, as far as anyone is concerned. We are the Kenmore Police Department and we function as such. We also have all the officers that are available to draw from Shoreline, Woodinville, neighboring areas very quickly from the other contract cities. We have direct access to what I consider to be among the very best specialty units in the country. Not only major crimes, but SWAT team, Rainier, Guardian One, helicopter, whatnot. Really, the top-notch in all of those areas that are widely recognized to be agencies such as Boeing Field, et cetera. We're sharing all those specialty units. Currently, Kenmore, we're providing a school resource officer every single day of the school year. Obviously, it's been a hiccup over the last few months, but typically, when schools in session, we're there every single day. I'm normally split between high school and middle school. Quite honestly, the majority of the time is at high school because that is where the most activity is, where the most need is. We tend to rotate those SROs. Depending on the day, it's one of four to five different officers that we've selected specifically to work in that assignment on overtime. It saves a great deal of money and there's a very good selection of people who work up there. And obviously, they do a number of things and conduct investigations while they're there, a lot of, whether it be CPS referrals, used referrals, any type of investigation for a crime to make on campus, but also serves as a mentor to a lot of the kids and builds relationships. And I believe most importantly is really a security presence for incidents that could occur and having an officer on campus really helps deter a lot of times major incidents from happening. As you can see there, a fair amount of community outreach conducted in 2019 and into 2020. We continue to host school dances and school events. Talk about National Night Out here in a little bit, but it went successfully in 2019, last August. We always participate in DUI crash demonstrations with the fire department at Inglemore. As well as be a presence at all the city events, try to interact informally and casually with all the community at all those fun events. For this year, moving forward, there's a few things we're trying to add. I started a pilot project this January at Kenmore Elementary, and we were able to do it a handful of times, unfortunately interrupted by the pandemic, but I myself had the opportunity to go to the elementary school and we'd go and simply have lunch with the kids, pick a different class, actually multiple classes over the course of a couple hours when they're having lunches there. And we just go and sit down and have very interesting conversations with elementary kids about police work and what we do. And it's really designed to just be very informal and really, it's clear in some of my conversations with them that sometimes that's the only positive experience they have with police, because if they're, if we're coming to their home, oftentimes it's not positive. So this is an opportunity to see police in a positive light. And I can tell you that I've never been a rock star, but I certainly feel like one when I go to the elementary school. It's a great experience. Another thing we want to start in, it was supposed to start in April this year. It's not going to be till the fall now, is at nurturing trust workshops. It's something that worked well in Shoreline and we're borrowing the model and working with the North Shore School District, really focusing with some, you know, segment of the population, the Spanish-speaking families in particular, that are not engaged a great deal, particularly in law enforcement. And so we're utilizing the schools to have these conversations and some Spanish-speaking staff that we have and covering a number of topics specific to youth, such as drugs, domestic violence, positive discipline, bullying, teen suicide, things of those sorts. So we're going to try to pick that up again in the fall. And covering a number of topics specific to youth such as drugs, domestic violence, positive discipline, bullying, teen suicide, things of those sorts. So we're going to try to pick that up again in the fall. Knock on wood. Continue to utilize Washington Traffic Safety Commission grants. We've already started DUI emphasis. We've done that already this year. And once we get to green lights, we will start distracted driving emphasis once again too, once we have a little more traffic on the road. We're also doing a fair amount of parking emphasis. One of the largest complaints I get across my desk, really the two biggest ones are abandoned vehicles and parking complaints. So we try to address that proactively, not only on patrol, but also doing special emphasis. And we're incorporating that not only into parking emphasis, but parks at the same time. So in between checking for parking violations and doing timed parking enforcement around particularly downtown, we also go into the parks and do checks there as well. North Sound Radar, we participate actively in, and I won't steal Brooke's under, I'll let her present at the end of this, but we're still actively involved in that along with our four other partner agencies. We'll discuss that more in a bit. National Night Out had been planned for August. That obviously is not happening now. Nationally, it's been recommended we move it back. So we're going to have it in October 6th hopefully. And this year, going to incorporate a bike rodeo. Again, it was supposed to be good biking weather in August. We'll see how it goes in October. But incorporating bike rodeo and a number of other things that were traditionally involved in National Night Out. So getting in just to a few statistics here, as you can see, our officers per thousand residents went down slightly this year, I'm sorry, 2019. Primarily because of staffing issues, not only that sheriff's office really thread law enforcement. It's been a tremendous issue seen all around the country in recruiting and retaining officers. So we're maintaining, we are holding one vacancy currently more than we would normally have. So that's reduced to a slight reduction in the number of officers per thousand residents. Despite that slight reduction, our response times are fairly similar. The green light at the bottom is a priority X calls is the ones that really matter the most. They're the in progress, most likely violent or violent dish in nature. And we're able to get there around the same time that we were in 2018 with slightly more officers. Our dispatch calls for service actually went down in 2019, which is a little unusual. You can see the population has grown. The numbers have actually gone up over the years, but we actually went down a little bit. Not necessarily a bad thing. I guess it means that people need the police a little bit less than they did in 2018. So if those numbers continue to go down, that's not necessarily a bad sign. Self-initiated police activity, we refer to them as on views. There'll be traffic stops or area checks or anything along those sorts of officers going and proactive policing. Despite having slightly less officers, we're still around the same as we were last year. The cost per capita is roughly the same. Half the graph is hidden by all of your faces here. Someone move you over. About the same as they were in 2018. Access retail, insert the cost basis, access retail, real estate property value down slightly. So the costs overall are slightly less. So if you look at dispatch calls for services generally at our city, what we refer to is Edward one, Edward two, Edward three, Edward four, and Edward five around the city with Bothell Way being right in the middle, running through the Edward three. The most calls over the course of 2019 were in the Edward two, which primarily that's because the line for the Edward two encompasses the north side of Bothell Way. East of 73rd tends to generate a fair amount of calls. So that's a district with the most calls. And as one would expect, the at least almost entirely residential Edward four is the, receives the most, sorry, the least dispatched calls for service over the course of the year. So to we get into the crime stats, and I know this is something that's been discussed in the past and been prepped for previously. We've switched in 20, middle of 2018 from the uniform crime reporting format to neighbors, which is the traditionally the newer way of consolidating and reporting crime stats nationally. This was a big undertaking by the sheriff's office. It was included the implementation of a very costly and time consuming report management system that I can tell you from personal experience was a bit of a headache to take on and for the officers to change since we've been using the same report writing system for 15 years. So it did take some time. We're now reporting 100% in neighbors. And 2019 represents the first full year of nothing but neighbors data. So that's why on most of the graphs you see in the police services report, there's one data point. It's not ideal. It's not something I love to have on there, but we have to report apples and that will compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges. And comparing those two types of reporting systems is not really what the crime analysts allow us to do. So that's why you do see the one data point. Moving forward in future years, we'll have nothing but neighbors data and we'll do, project those trends, crime trends, report them a little better. So neighbors crime trends or crime stats are broken down into persons, properties in society, crimes against each of those. This dress graph just shows you each of those over the course of 2019. Certainly peaks and valleys. Generally, still very, very low in relation to crimes per thousand. So getting to a few specific things, just one because it's a very obviously important one homicide, there was no homicides in 2019. The one in 2018, I understand it's a bit of anomaly. So really, in my mind, it's zeros across the board, but technically there is one 2018. So what I did, though you don't see some of these charts in the police services official work, I wanted to show some relations, some give you some idea of some of these high profile some of the crimes that people care about the most and giving an idea of what they were over the course of time. I did it by combining some numbers and doing some math and taking some liberties with the statistics. So you won't see this in the official report, but it does give you a general idea of where some of the crimes lie. For instance, burglaries are now in neighbors combined in commercial and residential burglaries altogether. As you can see there, crimes are, or burglaries are down significantly over the years, peaking in 2016, and now we're down to a low of 42. And we hope to continue that trend. Motor vehicle staffs, same, we're down closer to what we had in 2016, significantly less than last year. Car prowls remained very similar. It tends to be the most common crime in our municipality. Just your typical car prow in the middle of the night. So they don't, aren't rising from, they didn't rise from last year. It still tends to be an issue. Traffic collisions, pretty much the same as 2018, still at the state line across the board down from where they were a few years back, but it's a slight reduction. Like I said, moving forward, we'll be able to compare now that we're in neighbors, be able to compare ourselves with agencies neighboring as we can look at Lake Forest Park, Kirkland, Bothell and really compare our data per capita with theirs. So once I have that report that's generated by WASPIC, we'll be able to even better report of where we're at crime wise. Hopefully that will be in the coming spring. And as far as our community outreach here, I encourage you to follow us on Facebook and Twitter. We started up accounts on each last month and we continue to give community updates to everyone, whether it be something good that happened in the community, something positive or something unique, something that they heard on Facebook or heard sirens and maybe we pop it up and let people know before the room real starts. So encourage you to follow us. And before I turn it over to Brooke for an update on radar, any questions I can answer?
Mayor Baker, are you there?
I'm here. Questions? Councilmember O'Keane.
No questions for me, thank you.
Councilmember Marshall.
Was there any effect that the quarantine seems to have had on crime in general?
Sure. And apologies, that was something I was going to try to cover in my report. I'd say generally crime is down, calls for service are down in March, for instance, comparing March 2019 to March 2020, calls were down about eight, eight percent from what they were last year. We have not, we've been very lucky. We have not seen the massive increase in domestic violence calls that other agencies have. A lot of people have been cooped up. We expected to see an uptick on domestic violence calls, but we really haven't in Kenmore. So we've been very fortunate in that sense. I anticipate as we start slowly going out and returning to normal in the coming month or two, crime is certainly going to go back up and there's going to be more crimes of opportunity out there. But for now, it has been down. Thanks.
Councilmember Curtis.
I had a question on the cost per compared to assessed value. I can't quite figure out why we measure that. Somebody must think it's important, but I, it's beyond me.
It's a great question. I don't know. It's generated by the, the people downtown when they write up the report and they report it every single year. And I don't know. Suppose it looks good on a chart, my guess.
All right, thank you.
Actually, can I jump in? I might be able to. So per capita cost isn't always the best way to see if you're getting good value for your dollar on police. Because you could have a city like, I don't know, Tuck Willa, that has a small population compared to its commercial base or like even Bothell. Bothell has a pretty big commercial base compared to its population. And, and so if you did, if you had, if you just looked at per capita only for costs and compared us to Bothell, you'd think that there's something wrong there. So to get more apples to apples, another way to look at it is what are your police services costs based on the, the value of all the properties in Kenmore are in the city that you're looking at? And that kind of helps you have a kind of more level way of looking at police services compared to other cities.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Well, you, you, City Manager, you might have kind of partially answered my question. First, I wanted to just say I'm, you know, super excited about the lunch with cops and the nurturing relationships program and of course radar program, even though we haven't talked about that yet. But, you know, and all the, you know, great work you're doing. But, you know, in particular, I think those are just outstanding. Really, you know, developing those relationships in the community. And my question did have to do with the cost per capita. My, my sense from your presentation is that the costs are down a little bit because we're down staff a little bit. But it seemed like the cost per capita actually went up a little bit. So I was just trying to put those pieces together.
So right now, we're carrying one vacancy. Every contract city being asked to take a fair with the claw fair share. Part of their basically staff, but for the entire sheriff's office, just breaking it up based on population around the county. And because we're carrying that one vacancy, we're backfilling during that time on overtime. So we're not paying for the FDE. We're using backfill overtime to cover it, which is going to be cheaper because we're not paying for a full body. So there is some cost savings there. And that's what's resolved. So I think a lot of those numbers kind of gets skewed because of that.
I do have to jump in. Overall, our police costs continue to go up every year, including in 2019, even with a vacancy. So it just might be a case of the population going up as well, the two going up together.
Got it.
Councilmember File.
No, I just want to thank our police chief for doing such great work. I really do appreciate his work with our community and our surrounding community, building relationships and report. Nothing's better than healing relationships and building trust. And I think that program you're doing with the elementary school is fabulous. I have some questions that I'll drop on later about the overall report. There's a couple of things in there I want to ask you about, but we can hold off until later. But thank you for putting together such a great report.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I was going to ask, I've been looking at these reports now for six, seven years. And something I've always liked in the reports in the past was that we did have some comparisons to other cities on things like cost per capita or you know, level of different types of crime or different types of callouts, kind of giving us an idea how we compared to cities around us and elsewhere in King County. And I always thought that was helpful. I didn't notice I was missing from this report. There's a way to get that back in for future reports to be appreciated because I thought it was useful to see how we compared to some of our peer cities. And both in cost and prime level and that sort of thing. So other than that, I really appreciate the report and thank you very much.
And then in the past, it's, yeah, if you've compared it to other contract cities, it would be like Covington, Maple Valley, whatnot. What I'm hoping to do, once I get the report from WASPIC this spring, is to be able to actually give comparisons to our local jurisdictions, not contract cities, but Kirkland and Bothell and really give some good numbers. So I'll provide that once I have.
Yeah, I mean, in the past, we even had, you know, at least I distinctly remember on the cost per capita, which I know isn't a perfect metric, but I remember that chart being fairly beefy and having even Seattle was listed. Tuck Willa always stood out because of their, their mall and all of the, of the police they have to deal with that. But it is kind of a helpful perspective to kind of see outside of our borders and see how we're comparing to other cities, other places.
On the crime side of it, I'm really excited to have one full year of neighbors reporting. 2019 is our first full year of neighbors reporting because our neighboring cities around us have been on neighbors for years. And so we have not been able to compare ourselves with them because we were UCR and they were neighbors and there's no way to do an apples to apples comparison. So now that we finally have a full year of 2019 data, we're going to be able to compare our crime rates to Bothell and Lake Forest Park and Kirkland. So that's coming, but I'm really excited about that.
And Chief, I've been getting these reports for a number of years now, and I really appreciate the way that you've implemented. And I think the information's been good. And I think you're doing a fine job with those, those reports we get every week. And I do appreciate them. All right. Any further questions from the council? Hearing then. Ms. Butner. I believe you're up on radar.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm going to share my screen here. And see if I can get it. Okay, can folks see the PowerPoint?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So my name is Brooke Butner. Thank you for having me. I am fairly new to this position, managing the North Sound Radar program. I come from King County, where I was at Department of Community and Human Services with Councilmember Shrubnik, actually. And working on a lot of diversion projects. So I'm really excited to come to let me know if that goes away. I felt like I just made the PowerPoint go away, but, but I'm really excited to come up to North County. I'm from this area. I'm from Lake Forest Park, right on the border of Kenmore, but I'm in Kenmore all the time. So exciting to be here at the council. So Radar Response Awareness, De-escalation and Referral is a program that started in the city of Shoreline, which is also a King County Sheriff's Office Agency or jurisdiction. And started initially as a way to share information between officers that were encountering folks with either behavioral health or developmental disabilities. And through the years with additional resources, they were able to add and mental health professional navigator and then began, as I'm sure you folks are familiar with, began to share that resource with other departments. Currently, the North Sound Radar program covers Bothell, Kenmore, Kirkland, Lake Forest Park and Shoreline. And as we formalize the model, we anticipate that other cities will want to use this resource, which will continue to contribute to the economies of scale that we're able to pull out of having multiple jurisdictions under one program and one program manager. We, we do see a lot of value in having this program cross jurisdictions because people, especially people with behavioral health concerns will cross borders and there without a program like this, there are not a lot of methods for officers from different agencies or different departments to share information or to even know that somebody has been seen in another jurisdiction. So at this point with the level of funding we have right now, there are two main So at this point, with the level of funding we have right now, there are two main prongs of the services that Radar provides. One is something called a response plan that was developed by Shoreline, and there's an example on your screen there. The idea of that is that an officer going into a situation with somebody that has been identified as having a mental health or behavioral health, or rather developmental disability concern, goes in with some really key information that otherwise would not be in their records keeping system. Things like what the general presentation of the person's condition is, as well as what works and what doesn't work. So they call that hooks and triggers, and that's super valuable for a law enforcement officer going in, for example, to a situation with somebody that has a developmental disability and is really physically large and likes to hug. For an officer to know that going in will help, can help allay a lot of concerns and can even lead to reduction in loss in use of force, which we have seen in early reports from the program. The other huge component of the program is that mental health professionals, which we call navigators in this role, are going out with corresponding officers to either do immediate crisis intervention when they're on staff or to do follow-up on referrals that come in from officers. And their role is to, to build rapport with an individual, to assess what's going on for them, and then to connect them to the community of care. So it's a really short-term intervention, the idea is that a trained mental health professional can identify what the need is, can make a referral or facilitate a connection, so that that individual isn't relying on our crisis system, our law enforcement, 911, fire in hospitals, but rather on the community care network. The official goals of the program are to share de-escalation strategies, to collaborate with mental health professionals, train mental health professionals, to reduce, reduce repeat encounters, in other words, to reduce reliance on the crisis system, and to increase collaboration and increase the cost effectiveness of, of these solutions. So and, and the five jurisdiction nature of the program really goes to the cost effectiveness and the sharing of resources. The program started out in Shoreline initially with funding from risk management at King County Sheriff's Office and at, at the county, and with a significant grant from the Department of Justice that also came along with a, an in-depth study by George Mason University that I referenced earlier, that has shown really good early outcomes in terms of officer satisfaction, reduction in use of force, the increase in the aware, awareness of behavioral health issues on the part of officers. And about two years ago, just under two years ago, the program was able to expand significantly because of funding from the King County Mental Illness Drug Dependency Tax Levy. During this biennium, the funding is $780,000 with a start in April of last year, so just a slight, slightly less than two-year funding allocation. And that will come to an end at the end of this calendar year. And so we are really hoping that in the next biennium, this program will continue to receive funding from King County, and then also from a grant that is passed through, passed through Waspik, which is the Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs. And the fact that this program was awarded that funding is a real, is a great endorsement of the model and the, the interjurisdictional nature of it. It is actually funds from a statewide lawsuit called True Blood that pulls from contempt fines for, for failure to adequately address individuals that are in the criminal legal system that have competency issues or behavioral health concerns. So it's such a good use of that, that contempt fine money to put it into pulling people with behavioral health out of the system earlier, taking them from the criminal legal system and putting them into the community care, care system. Yeah, 2019, so it's, I'm not sure if I've really emphasized that it's a very new program. 2019 was probably the first year that it was fully operational in five cities, and we're really at the cusp of, with me starting as a program manager and a couple of other important changes in the last few months, at the cusp of really becoming a full-blooded, like excellent five jurisdiction program. So this is really exciting. During 2019, there were 446 individual encounters in the five cities. The average encounter time was an hour, 1.3 hours, so the navigators are staying with an individual longer than an officer might be able to in just a simple, you know, street encounter, and really figuring out what's going on and connecting them to care. 16% over the five cities were homeless. I have some drill down data about Kenmore, the, that looks somewhat similar. So of the five cities, the breakout data for Kenmore for 2019 is available in the report that you were sent with the meeting minutes. But just quickly to highlight, this is a, a much smaller number, because Kenmore is a smaller city, than some of our other agencies. But the percentages, well, maybe not statistically significant because of the number, we do have the same percentage on homelessness. 16% of the individuals encountered were homeless, almost 10% were military veterans. 72% accepted referrals to ongoing services. And that's really important because again, the purpose of the program is to get people away from calling 911, away from needing the law enforcement safety net and into the community of care. And then 76% of the folks encountered had some behavioral health condition that would qualify as a disability because it impacts some domain of their life enough to, to indicate that they need services. And that, to me, that's a really important indicator because it says about two third, or three quarters of the folks that they're seeing are really in need of care and not, and largely not getting it, and that they are falling to law enforcement to receive the care that they need. And, and the value of this program is to put them in to the community mental health system or the private pay mental health system so that they're getting the services they need by the professionals that do that. The current state of the Radar program, we as everybody else are affected by the pandemic. We currently have limited staffing and are not able to expand because there, or at least not able to expand immediately because of the COVID-19 response. We have two mental health professional navigators that are working right now, and two in the pipeline that we're not, we haven't really been able to onboard. And once we have those folks onboarded, our numbers will be much higher. Our different departments are utilizing the program very differently right now. Some, in some part because of size, but also because it hasn't been formalized enough for some departments. So one of my goals is that Kenmore get a lot more focused services. And Chief Moen has been such an awesome partner since I started just a couple of months ago in figuring out, how can we best meet the needs of the Kenmore Police Department? Right now, that's not, that's really difficult because they're, because of the COVID-19 response, they are trying to figure out how to manage it on their side. We have limited navigator capacity on our side, so we're very much paused. But I'm so optimistic about really optimizing services in Kenmore. The future of the program, one of my primary goals since I came on is to secure our ongoing funding. It's a much less secure funding environment now with the pandemic, but to continue to look at our existing funders, both Mid and Waspik, and then at other state and national possible fund sources. We are in the end stages of designing a database, Norcom, which is an agency, an agency that provides dispatch for a lot of the departments in the state of Washington, is developing a database for the Radar program that we will own, then own, and will share with other jurisdictions and other cities, and I'll show you that. I'll show you that in just a second. And then also just to optimize how each department is using the program. Again, I have had such great partnership with Chief Moen, so I'm excited as this crisis winds down to continue to provide services in Kenmore and partner with other agencies within Kenmore. So this is just a quick look at the screen of this database. It's, to me, it's a very exciting project because this will, is developed just for the purposes of the correspondent program. And the, the idea of sending mental health professionals out with law enforcement is a very new concept nationwide. This is, we're in maybe year five of, across the nation, of different agencies, including big city agencies, really recognizing the idea that mental health professionals can help with law enforcement services. And so our community here in North King County is really cutting edge, being in that the former chief in Shoreline has been working on something like this for over 10 years, and really saw that the future of law enforcement is to partner effectively with, with social work and mental health professional and health and human services. So that's exciting, and we are developing this proprietary system that we are then going to be able to share locally and nationally to allow communication between law enforcement and mental health professionals. So that's just a little screenshot, it is coming soon, and it's going to be a really exciting addition. And that's all I have, so any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah.
Let's go down the line again. Councilmember O'Kane.
I just want to thank you for the outstanding presentation, and you too, Chief Moen. But the services Radar provides to our community, I am thankful that we're able to provide this for our community. So I'll, that's really just a gratitude that you're here, and I hope we are able to secure the funding that you need to grow and expand and provide the support that our police department deserves. So thank you.
Councilmember Marshall.
I can't second that enough. That's, it's absolutely the cutting edge of trying to help people where their behavioral issues are causing problems, mental health, substance abuse. I'm very proud of our department for being on this cutting edge, it's great.
Councilmember Curtis.
I would just say, as a primary care doctor for 35 years, I saw a lot of the overlap to the depression, the anxiety, the other major health issues, and physical health and economic and lots of other issues. So I'm, I really appreciate this program.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
I certainly appreciate this program, and I'm delighted that, you know, Brooke's at the program helm now. And I, I had a couple of little questions. One was, it, it looked like about three quarters of the folks had a behavioral health issue, and I was just curious what the, the other quarter were, since it's sort of designed for that. And then if you could speak a little bit to kind of operationally, how, how does it work in relationship to the rest of the crisis system? For example, do the police typically reach out to the Radar person first instead? Or, you know, how does that work? And then the last question is just, if you have any thoughts on how, how is this funding going to work? Are, are we thinking it'll still be under the mid, or do you have other thoughts? And yeah.
Yeah, good questions. Okay, so in terms of the percentage, there are folks that there's, there's a small percentage of folks that they're seeing that their need is really economic or social need, so domestic, in some cases domestic violence, in some cases strictly homelessness. And in some, I would say a larger portion of that other quarter is a behavioral health condition, but I wouldn't call it a disabling behavioral health condition.
Oh, got it.
A lower acuity mood disorder that ends up coming to the attention of the police for whatever reason, or comes out in another, in a context that the police are having for another reason, and they do a referral, and the MHP is able to kind of catch that early at a subacute level and refer them into services. So that, I'm glad you asked that question because I think it would be helpful to provide even more context on the threshold of acuity needed to qualify as a disabling condition. That's people with very serious behavioral health conditions. And I think that's really significant, so thank you for asking that question. Operationally, the way it works now is a little bit different for each department. Currently, several departments have navigators that are riding along several days a week, and so they're available to get called out to a call. For example, in Kirkland, an officer will be assigned to have a navigator in their car. If a call comes in that's pretty clearly behavioral health related, like someone screaming at McDonald's, they will send whoever's closest, but then the car that has the navigator will dispatch there as well, and then they can do crisis intervention. And then they also have a system, each department has a system of referrals. So they, right now, it's either paper or an email, everybody's kind of doing it differently. The idea is that with our new database system, referrals will get entered much more smoothly and easily by the officers, and then whoever is the next navigator that's on can address the issue. If there's somebody, the future state is that if there is a navigator on, and we hope at full staffing to have a navigator on daily during a day or a swing shift, that they can dispatch pretty quickly or immediately to a crisis as it's happening. And each of the departments has expressed a strong commitment to sending the officer to whatever jurisdiction the issue is in. So if we have a navigator in Shoreline and we get a call from Kenmore, they're strongly committed to sending their Shoreline PD officer to take the navigator over there and either, you know, hand them off to another officer, kind of do what needs to be done. Right now, we don't have enough staffing capacity to do that, but that's the, that's the dream. And then quickly, kind of the first half of your question was about how it works with the rest of the crisis system. And at this time, because they're not immediately available, if there's an issue that needs, if there's not a navigator on duty, and there's an issue that needs immediate care or intervention, then the officers are still using their training to call either mobile crisis team or the crisis, refer to the crisis line, or in some cases, the designated crisis responders. It's kind of interesting because the presence of the navigators, I think, has improved the ability of each of the police departments to refer to the designated crisis responders because our MHPs are providing education about like how to write that affidavit, what kind of information is needed, when a hospitalization is going to be most helpful. Because a lot of times, these folks enter into crisis and they are known to our navigator, and they are known to the officers. So there, there's a lot of learning across the two disciplines. And then your final question was about the future of funding. I heard recently that they're looking, they're projecting right now an anticipated reduction of about 16 million in mid-funding next year, or for the next biennium, which is close to a third of the mid-budget. So that is concerning. We do have, I, I do feel optimistic though, because we have a really great relationship with King County Councilmember Dembowski, who was an early sponsor of this program. He's who brought it to mid initially, and, and sees the excellent outcomes and the potential of the program. So that makes me feel optimistic. I also, I just know that as cutting edge as this is, and as exciting as it is to have a program that spans five jurisdictions, I came to this program because I feel really hopeful about the future of it and the ability of this program to bring in more support dollars. And I don't think we're, we're honestly that far away from what we need to fully staff and implement this program, so it's not expensive. I also kind of long-term, I hope to see this program getting reimbursed through kind of non-traditional ways, including by managed care organizations, because I think in the future, we will have the ability to, to partner with other data sources that can show reductions in hospital utilization over time because of this intervention. So that's a little pie in the sky, but I'm optimistic that that, that's, that's where this program is ultimately headed, and where this kind of like early intervention is ultimately headed. Oh, and what, what, we do have some levy money in Bothell, but that will be tax dependent, and then the Waspik funding, we will reapply for that when it comes up again. We will most likely reapply for that when it comes up again, so. That's a lot, a lot of information, did that answer your questions, Deb?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's great, thank you.
Councilmember Five.
Yes, I just want to really thank you for your report. I think it's really important that we help our persons with differences within our community and utilize, you know, techniques and approaches to minimize persons from harm and ending up in our police system where they really need help and support. So I do hope also that you, you're able to retain the, the funding that you need to grow this program and continue to better serve our community at large, so thank you for your services.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what my colleagues have said, I think this is a really innovative, needed approach. And I would really hope that even with the economic downturn, that we're able to find ways to expand this. I know that Councilmember Dembowski's been a real champion, and, and I assume he's looking for ways to try to expand this a little bit. But, but I really appreciate the presentation, and I appreciate the work that you and your team are doing.
Thanks everybody for having me, and thank you again, Chief Moen, for all your support and collaboration. Oh, did I miss somebody? Questions?
City manager, he wants, wants a word here.
Yeah, I really want to jump in here, thanks Brooke, really good presentation. And I just want to underscore what a couple of you have said about Councilmember Dembowski. He really was an early champion for this and got the funding for the North End. So if you get a chance, if you could thank him for what he's done as far as this program goes. And I remember a couple of years ago, he convened the group of the five cities, the city managers and the chiefs of police. We all sat around and, and the heard, the word, the two words I heard most during that meeting were game changer. They believe that this program is a game changer, and those don't come around very often in law enforcement, so it's a pretty big deal. Lastly, speaking of early champions, we also here on this call have an early champion of this Lastly, speaking of early champions, we also here on this call have an early champion of this program, and that's Chief Mullen. So when he was in Shoreline, he was carrying the ball and making it happen early on, not just for Shoreline, but for the North End. So he probably doesn't like to get credit for that, but that's something I knew of when we were going through the process of hiring him. So thanks, Chief.
Yeah, I remember this program started out and I remember Rob and I going down to the city council chambers and I spoke in favor of it. And I've been very actively supporting Councilmember Dembowski since this program first was rolled out. And my first experience was, I think, one of the nights in, in Bothell, where it was very early on, where there was a pretty successful outcomes from having both people in, in the radar involved in the calls. And so I've been a huge supporter and a big fan of this. So, thank you. Thank you.
The last time we spoke with Councilmember Dembowski, he mentioned that he may ask us to call again on our city managers and mayors. So stay tuned as we continue to advocate for funding for the North End.
Happy to lend my support to any request you have with this program. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is draft hazard mitigation plan. Mr. Hampson, our Development Services Director.
Mayor, let me promote him to be able to talk. Hold on a quick minute.
Okay.
Okay. So he should be on in just a moment. Brian, are you there?
I am here.
Oh, great.
Oh, I have a background. Interesting. How'd I do that? Oh.
Oh, great. I was gonna, okay, Brooke, stop sharing her screen. Great. Go ahead, Brian.
I don't know how the background came on. I just clicked start video. I must've hit something. Yeah. Good evening, everybody, and thanks for the opportunity to discuss this plan with you. We've been wanting to do this previously, but because of what situation on pandemic, we had to put it on hold. But we need to have this discussion with you now because FEMA is going to be approving our plan soon. So we wanted to make sure that we brought it to you guys first, in case we needed to make any small, minor tweaks or changes to it. We could just bring them back and it'll be a little bit easier for you to process with that. So now I'm going to try to share my screen. Hopefully this goes well. No, they do. Here we go. Should've practiced a little bit. Can you guys see my screen?
We can.
Okay. So this is the annex, the city of Kenmore's annex. And what it is, is the annex of the King County's overall hazardous mitigation plan. And so a hazardous mitigation plan, hazard mitigation plan, really assesses the natural and human caused hazards within the city that can impact our city. And in order for us to receive and be eligible for federally, federal funded grants and funds, we have to have this in place. We don't, if we didn't want to receive the funds, we wouldn't have to do this program. But as you see, as we're going through right now, it's pretty, a good opportunity to have something like this in place. These plans are required to be updated every five years. And so our last one was approved in 2015. And when we did our previous plan, we were partners with ESKA, if you remember. And so ESKA had primarily Snohomish County cities, only Lake Forest Park and Kenmore were from King County. But we previously partnered with ESKA and used their template for the plan, which you'll see it's in the back of the, the, the back, back of this plan. And so the next time we update our plan, we'll have this previous version of this plan in the back and you can compare to it from previous versions. But one thing happened with shifting to this plan, and we really got to give credit to King County, Derek Herbert. He's the emergency manager, manager that was really responsible for taking on the, the King County hazard mitigation plan. But what he did is he's restructured it in such a way that it's actually useful. I don't know if you've taken the time, if you look through our old 2015 plan, it was really hard to measure and actually accomplish some of the items that needed to be done. And so I got to give him a lot of credit for all of his hard work and help with us working on this. And additionally to it, we had a city team, but primarily it was Lori Anderson who really took the lead, putting this plan together, getting the, the meeting set up, having the discussions with all the various people, including our emergency manager, Carl Lunach, and King County and other departments. And, and to look at the actual city's vulnerabilities and required mitigation that we need for those. And so realistically, when it comes to a major disaster, we're going to be relying heavily, if not everything with King County. And so, but when we talk about, you know, the local disasters, the stuff that we actually deal with, you know, we're going to be focusing more on, you know, the Siamamish River Bridge detour routes, the, the inclement weathers that we see, the snow and ice storms, the flood storms, the, you know, severe weather where we have debris disposal and stuff like that, or landslide hazards. And so this plan, like I said, has a really, really good, realistic mitigation measures that we could actually measure it as we, we have to provide annual reports on this to the King County and the state. So we could reply back to them. So really what we did through here is we look at the, the actual hazards. And so, you know, we took a look at what actually is in King County and not necessarily throughout the whole, or in Kenmore, not necessarily through the whole county. So it made it a lot easier. Just as Derek put in these hazards, we could just actually look at the risk summary and then the vulnerability summary. And so as we go through with these throughout the year, what we'll be doing is comparing our outcome to how we've reduced these risks and vulnerabilities. And so what we, each different hazard, you know, kind of has those summaries with it. And as we go through, like I said, we'll be dealing, you know, mainly if it's an earthquake, a large earthquake, it's in a regional situation, we'll be relying on King County. But when it comes into the flooding, flooding stuff in the local severe weather incidents, that's when we could really start to make a big difference. And some, some of those could be just improving some of the, the flood measures, you know, or it could be relocating buildings or structures or houses that are within the flood plain that we have been doing in the past. And we could continue to do that through grants that are available, both from King County and through FEMA. And so hopefully we could take advantage of a lot of those grants going out through, through the year and have a good report back to the county and state. Here we just keep, continue to talk about the landslides and the severe weathers, the of course, we're not susceptible to a tsunami or a volcano. However, we are, we, we could have what they call as a seiche. So a seiche is a tsunami that happens in a closed body of water. And so if there's a landslide, a big enough landslide on the other side over to the west, maybe in Lake Forest Park that created a big enough wave, it would actually be a seiche. There could be a possible, a small probability or possibility that we could have one of those occur here, but we did put that in here. Wildlife and wildfires, we don't really have, you know, any big concerns of wildfires. We have places like St. Edward State Park with the, you know, large amounts of trees. But I think based on what we have, we have the capacity and the capability to probably handle, you know, what fires we would have here. You may notice here that there's a health incident. You know, when we wrote this, of course, we didn't have any idea of a pandemic like this occurring. So we're going to take a look back at this and see if there's something we can put in here that we could learn, that we've learned from a recent situation. But you, you know, we did have, you know, the wherewithal to understand that the, the public health real concern is limited or is, is really applicable when you get a large amount of people who are congregated around. So it's, you know, similar to what we're kind of seeing now with the social distancing. It's really the best way to prevent and maintain that health incident. So that's really the nuts and bolts of our annex plan are those topics. And what we do is we go through here and we just identify the city of Kenmore's area, you know, hazard, erosion hazard areas, the landslide hazard areas and the seismic hazard areas. Streams and wetlands, of course, all can be a concern to flooding. We took a look at the, the North Shore Utility Department. They don't specifically write their own plans. They are, they do have an annex to the King County plan. But it's more important that the city put the information that references the utility districts, their assets in our plan. And then that way it'll have a little bit more teeth when we go to the county. So right now where we are with the plan is it's been sent to King County, which Derek has approved it. He's forwarded it on to FEMA and they're in the process of reviewing it. They took a look at our draft plan. They said it was good. If you make any changes to this, we're going to send it back to them and then hopefully get their blessing and bring it back to you, council, sometime in the near future. As part of the the preparation of this plan, there was requirement for public outreach. And so a couple of things that we did through public outreach was, one of the, the movie nights, we set up a booth and had information for people to ask questions or actually hand out informations for the public at the event. And then following that, we set up a event at the city hall where people could come in and ask all kinds of questions and get information. It's really helpful. That's about it. The rest of this is the old 2015 plan, but I didn't really want to go through that. Is, are there any questions?
Oh, let's, let's go down the list here. Councilmember O'Kane. Councilmember Marshall.
No questions. Thank you, Mr. Hampson.
Councilmember Curtis.
I would just comment that I found this easier to read than the last one. It felt like it had more useful information. I like the tabular formats. You could go exactly to the question you have. And in a quick, quick nutshell, kind of get some direction. So I like the improvement.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yeah, it's a great report. Thank you for the presentation. I don't have any questions.
Councilmember File.
Yes, I do have a question and I wanted to also thank you for the report. It's very comprehensive and easy to read. I'm happy that you're looking at the, the public health piece. Specifically, there's a category for hazard mitigation that's included in the FEMA's plan. And we have to specifically call it out for, for what it is and that it's under public assistance. And of course, we can look to what happened in Oso with our landslides and how that impacted not only public health, but then the impact on local community health and need. And so I do encourage that we, we add that public assistance piece to this plan. And we develop that part a little bit more so that in the case of an emergency, you always want to have a plan first and not have to swim backwards. It's a lot easier to navigate. And also found that to be true as well. So thank you for doing this great report again, and I appreciate you looking into that piece.
I will. Thank you, Mrs. File. I received your email from Rob this afternoon. So thank you in advance for that. It gave me some time to look into it. And what I found out, and I followed up with our emergency manager too, is the public assistance portion is really generally for the administrators of the grants. And so the people who are taking the money in from, and distributing it to, to local jurisdictions should primarily be the state and tribal governments that could really take advantage of the public assistance program. And specifically those categories that you mentioned, C through G. But what we will do is through our plan, it doesn't, we, they, C through G are the permanent work that we do. So it has to pertain to roads and water facilities, utilities, buildings and equipments and parks and rec. So we kind of address those through our plan. We just don't call them those names to confuse people. We write it more, you know, just straightforward. So, yeah, thanks for those questions.
Do you think the language then is clean enough that FEMA would have accepted under that umbrella? Especially considering that we have a brand new bridge we're building. I think we have a number of scenarios that we always have to plan for those worst case scenarios, right? And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a good question. Well, I'll, we'll make sure to ask FEMA what they think about that.
Great, thanks.
Deputy Mayor.
No questions. I appreciate the report. This is something new. So it was great to read through and I appreciate the work that's gone into it.
Yeah, Mr. Hampson, I agree with the Deputy Mayor and Councilmember Curtis and others. This was a really good report. It was easy to go through. It was easy to follow. And the explanations in that I thought were really pretty good. So thank you for the time that you put into this. It's, it's really paid off as far as I'm concerned. Any other questions? Hearing none. Thank you very much.
How do I get this off my screen now? How do you, how do I give control back to you?
Stop sharing.
Stop sharing.
It's actually in your virtual background. So if you click on camera on a stop video, if you click on your video settings, you'll go to virtual and virtual background.
Next item on the agenda is a ratifying a proclamation, 20 dash zero two dot one, amendment of the pandemic and public health emergency response and recovery. Mr. Carlinsey.
Thank you, Your Honor. Brian, if you hover over that green bar, you'll be able to turn it off.
I'm just going to hang up.
I'm gonna just.
You guys have a.
I'm gonna demote him.
There we go.
That works. Boy, the power. Promote and demote.
There you go.
Okay. All right. So we've been in this pandemic emergency for quite some time now, since early March. And in fact, at the, at the March 5th meeting, you declared state of emergency and also approved the pandemic and public health emergency response and recovery policy. And in that policy also included what they call, what we're calling closure pay. So when city facilities are closed and employees have to be sent home, they receive closure pay. The policy also talks about the, when we're in that state of closure, employees who are physically called out to the job site or to, to work for the city get additional premium pay or extra duty pay. While that was feasible, semi-sustainable in the short term, as this pandemic continues and appears to have no end in sight, this, the premium pay, the time and a half for being called out during a normal workday is no longer sustainable. I gave the employees a heads up that I'd be proposing to eliminate that at tonight's meeting. So that's my proposal is to, to take out references to the extra duty pay or the time and a half pay in the pandemic policy. I think this especially makes sense because as the governor said, instead of a light switch, this is going to be more like a dial being turned up gradually. So as time goes on, I can see us having more city employees being called back into work, even if we still may be in some state of closure. So I'm recommending that you approve this change. It's proclamation 20 dash oh two dot one. And it, and it's removing the references to the premium pay.
So the chair will entertain a motion to ratify a proclamation 20 dash zero two dash one, an amendment to our pandemic and public health emergency response and recovery. Is there? and I will.
Sorry, was that councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Okay, first and who's the second?
I, me, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any discussion? Wave your hands at the camera if you want. I can, I can see all of you. Okay, councilmember Marshall.
Sorry, no discussion.
Okay, you waved, so I just wanted to recognize that.
Oh, sorry, I didn't wave.
Well, no, no, if you have a question, wave. Councilmember O'Kane.
No question. Thank you.
No questions. Anybody else? All right. If there's no questions, clerk, please take the roll. And this is on ratifying motion number two zero dash zero two dot one.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Kane?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember File?
Yes.
It passes unanimously. All right. Next item on the agenda, staff report. Pandemic budget impacts. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. I too have a screen I'd like to share. Let's see here. Where are you? There you are. Okay. All right. So I want to give you just kind of general update on how's it going for the city with the pandemic and then also get into budget changes as well. What you have on your screen right now is an online tool that I use with this, with the management team and we go over this weekly. And this is a tool that we've been using before the pandemic. But every week we go over these. I still wholeheartedly believe in that statement. And then you can see it, some of our employee values and what we're in the business of and how we're going to succeed. Then what changes periodically is this question, the answer to this question right here, what is most important right now? And we, in light of this pandemic, as a management team, we've said that we need to be focusing on leading and supporting employees in the community through the social, mental health and economic impacts of the pandemic. So we did a pivot over to this as the most important thing we're working on right now. And under this thematic goal, or what we call a rally cry, we have defining objectives that serve this more most important thing. So we've identified these defining objectives. As you can see, and they're all color coded and you can change the colors. And so every week we assess, we say, okay, where are we at on these objectives? We doing good, bad, neutral? And so we can actually, you know, like I wanted to change essential services to red. I could so, but I don't want to. So I'm going to change it back to green. Keep employees safe. We've had zero employees have a confirmed case of the virus, which is a great thing. Really happy about that. We're doing our part to slow the spread in our community. And why is this not dark green? Just because people continue to catch it in Kenmore. Last time I checked, we had five people, five Kenmore residents die of the virus. So that's, I'm probably not going to give this a dark green until, until it's over. Communicate like crazy. I know that's a technical term, but I think Lauren Homiak and Nancy Osley in the city manager's office, combined with all the help from staff are doing a good job on that. I feel like my coworkers are doing a really good looking after, really good job looking after each other. We're on our way to developing a recovery plan. We're still in the early stages, but we've gotten a good start and Debbie Bent is taking the lead on that. And then respond to budget impacts. Maybe after tonight, I'll give this a darker green color, but whoops, didn't mean to do that. But yeah, it was last week it was yellow. Once I completed the memo that you have in front of you, I gave it a light green color, but but I'll let you also be the judge of that. So that's kind of just an online tool that we use as a management team to kind of remind us what's the most important and really what, what are we all about as an organization? And I also share this with the entire staff. I just shared this, this screen with the staff yesterday, or I mean, this morning, actually. So so if I could go to the memo, there it is. So this was uploaded Friday and we were putting the finishing touches on it Friday and and it was mainly the budget issues that was, that was holding this memo up, but but I'm, I'm really pleased with what I'm seeing out in the community. The Kenmore residents and businesses and city staff and you as this. You know, there's still new cat, new cases are added daily. Although it looks like the curve might be kind of flattening now, at least as far as the county goes. But that said, we need to still be on our guard and do our part and we need to amplify what the health department's doing to support them and meet that objective I talked about earlier. And just what it's doing to the economy, you know, we don't have any firm hard numbers on anything, but other than, you know, what we've all seen on unemployment. But I am just super concerned about the, the, the effects that this is going to have on our, on our economy. So I mentioned this earlier, our thematic goal, our defining objectives. And like I said earlier, I'm just really, really pleased with my coworker's ability to keep city services up and running. Even during the stay at home order, I'm amazed with, with what people have been able to creatively figure out how to get work done from home. These paragraphs here talk about some of the things we've got going. And then we were able to keep going, including the Western Mammifer Bridge. That project continues. In fact, overall, it's going well and, and maybe a little bit ahead of schedule. One, one or two reasons for that might be that the contractors had other jobs suspended, so they've been able to send workers over to our site. So we haven't had a shortage, shortage of workers on our site. And then also we've restricted the times of, we, we've taken away the restrictions on the times of the day that the contractor can close lanes for, to, to, to work. You may recall that we wanted the contractor to avoid school hours and rush hours and stuff like, you know, the, the commuting time to school and rush hour and all that. And we've taken those restrictions away. Kelly? Tomorrow afternoon, we're going to open bids on Wanty to Drive.
Rob, I'm back. I apologize. My internet is a little unstable tonight.
No worries. Tomorrow afternoon, we're going to open bids on Wanty to Drive, Walkways and Waterways project. And I am so excited for a number of reasons. I just, I'm, and I'm also super curious on how hungry contractors might be. Last I heard, we had 10 plan holders for the project, which is a good number. That's 10 potential bidders. You never get all 10 bidding, so it'll probably be something less than 10, but excited about that. And I'm hopeful that a silver lining of this might be that we might actually get some decent bids.
Yeah, Rob, or excuse me, Rob Kent's estimate was eight bids tomorrow.
Okay, good.
Was today.
Sweet. That'd be a good, that's a nice number of bids for a project that size. Yeah. Our parks remain open, but we've closed the park amenities, as you all know. And City Hall remains closed. And so let's talk about the budget. Well, we've been, we've been keeping a close eye on it. But that said, we don't have a lot of data right now. We haven't seen any even noticeable dramatic change in even permitting fees yet. Brian gave me year to date figures on permitting fees through April 20th compared to last year through April 20th. And actually this year, we're ahead of last year at this time. Now that said, I did see that the April 1st through April 20th numbers were starting to show signs of weakness in the permitting revenues. So we'll see how that goes. And, and Brian, we, we demoted Brian from being a panelist to a regular attendee, so he can't jump in. But he did tell me that as soon as the governor's order on the, the restriction on construction was lifted late last week, our, our permitting inspection line and other communication channels to our permitting department just were ringing off the hook. So there were people eager to get their plans reviewed and, and get their inspections done. So that's, that's a good sign. Really excited about that. But it's going to be bad. I know it will be. We, with this kind of shock to the economy, it, it, we can't avoid a pretty harsh impact to our economy and the, and the, what it's going to do as far as ripple effects go across all sectors. So we need to be ready. We need to respond accordingly. We need to assume the worst, but hope for the best. So on the hope for the best side, here are our strengths going into this. And I think we're relatively, keyword relatively, well positioned for this. Maybe even compared to other cities around us. Chief among which is we have strong fund balances. We've actually been building the fund, the fund balances even more throughout the years. And you know, with, with these four funds combined, you can see on the screen, we have close to $10 million of funds. The general fund, of course, is unrestricted. It's for the general fund. The strategic opportunities fund is also unrestricted. It's actually an extension of the general fund. And then the street fund obviously can only be spent on streets. And then you have your rainy day fund and that's 1.3 million. And that's restricted for rainy days. And one could probably make the argument that we're coming up on a rainy day. So I'm not saying we should go ahead and dive into and deplete all these reserves, but it's good to know they're there and they're strong compared to other cities. We're not the best in the area, but as far as fund balance ratio, but we're pretty darn good. You know, if you, if you take this 10 million, you know, we're, that's like 60 plus percent of our operating revenues. That's a nice, healthy number. And that's one of the reasons why we were, received the triple A bond rating is because we had strong fund balances. So strength number one. Strength number two is we have relatively less elastic revenues than other cities. Elastic meaning subject to fluctuations in the economy. So we do have an elastic revenue called sales tax, but it doesn't make up a big portion of our budget like other cities. Let me correct myself. It does make up a big portion of our budget. It's 2.7 million, but proportionately, it's a less, lesser amount of our budget than many cities experience. So the Linwoods and the Tuck Willows of the world are definitely going to see a much bigger decline in their revenues than we are. And what sales tax we do get, it tends to be less elastic. Now, of course, we do have the Kenmore Cameron, the, and the Murphys and those types of businesses that are taking a hit for sure. But we also have some of our larger tax payers, sales taxpayers like Safeway and Rite Aid. You know, those are pretty stable, kind of residential based sales taxpayers. And then also we've been benefiting from the Wayfair decision from 2018, which was a Supreme Court decision that requires internet retailers to pay sales tax to the point of destination. And, and we reported to you last year that we've been seeing an uptick in sales tax because more home delivery sales taxes being reported. And we're seeing that, you know, because stores are closed, people are ordering more things online right now and having delivered to their homes. And Kenmore is a residential city. So that could be a nice thing. We don't know yet how much more people are shopping at home because of the pandemic, but it could be a benefit to us. On the flip side, maybe people are also really tightening their belts and kind of bracing for bad times ahead and not spending as much either. So we just don't know it yet until we get some good sales tax. Also, we don't have, we don't, we have a very small BNO tax. It's only on one sector of our economy. And other cities have much more, you know, tax that they bring in. And that also tends to be a, an elastic tax that we're not going to take a hit on. So then property tax, on the other hand, is a stable source of revenue because of how it's collected under state law. And that is our largest source of general fund revenue. It's our largest source of operating revenue period. So it's nice to have that largest source of revenue also be your most stable source of revenue. So even with these good things that we have in place that position us well, we are still predicting a, an 11 and a half to 13% drop in our operating budget in 2020 alone. And that's about a 1.7 to 1.9 million dollar loss in revenue out of a $15 million operating budget. And I've been checking around, asking other city managers and they're, they're predicting a similar percentage to that 11.5, 13%. So I feel a little bit better about that because again, we don't have a lot of data to predict how much revenue we're going to last lose. But when I see other finance directors and city managers all kind of independently coming up with the same percentage, I feel a little better. Although maybe we'll all be wrong together. I don't know, but we'll see. And then this table shows the, the breakdown. Come on, where'd you go? It's thinking. This, this shows the breakdown in our tax revenues and compares 2019 actual to 2020 budget to our 2020 projection as of April and also our 21, 2021 projection. So you can see, here's the good news here, property tax because of increases in assessed valuation and also the, the, the 3% that we're able to take. It's actually, we're predicting more than 2019 actual and even more than 2020 budget. But here's the bad news, sales tax going down from 2.7 million down to 2080. You can see though, that our budget already had some more conservative estimate there. Sales tax at the state that distributed by the state, similar drop, which is 25%. I mentioned BNO tax. We're predicting a 25% drop in BNO tax, but it's a small portion of our budget because it only, because it only affects one sector of our businesses. And then utility taxes, we're just leaving alone. And they've been lackluster all along anyway. We've even seen declines in telephone utility tax in particular. And and then licenses and permits and charge for services embedded in these in part is our permitting revenues. And so you can see we're predicting a decline here, but charges and services also had some one time things in them. But licenses and permits, which also have some permitting revenue, not too much of a decline. And that's because we're still, even during the pandemic, we're still seeing people wanting to come in for permits, people wanting to have pre-application meetings for their projects. And we do have some. And um, we do have some projects in the pipeline that. Or that are about to be in the pipeline that hopefully we'll be able to keep moving forward. So this number right here, this license and permits, it might be a little optimistic. But um. But uh, we're going to do all we can to get those cash registers singing for, for these permits. Okay, moving on to the street fund. Um, we're going to see, we think we're going to see a drop in um, fuel tax. So fuel tax is collected by the state. And it's per gallon. It's not price per gallon. It's per gallon. And then it's distributed back to cities per capita. And so we were predicting close to half million in, in 2019. Uh, we're going to, we're predicting, I mean, we act, 483,000 is what we actually got in 2019. And we're predicting a 25% drop from that. Uh, why do we say 25%? Well, um. Because. We're hearing from Washed Out that right now during the height of the pandemic, traffic is down 50%. We didn't think that 50% would be the number all year long. We're hopeful that traffic will start climbing back up throughout the year. So that's why we're, we picked 25%. So another bad piece of news is transfers from the TBD. Transportation Benefit District, also known as the $20 car tab fee. Voters uh, last year statewide said to take that away. And we kept it in our budget um, optimistically thinking that it would get. That it would not get upheld by the courts, but so far the lower courts are seeming to uphold it. And so we've now taken out the $20 car tabs out of our revenue projections. So that's another hit and that's, that's not. Pandemic related. So, but here you can see the difference now, the, the 1.7 million between the 2020 budget and 2020 projection. If you look at comparing it to 2019 actual, it's even a bigger number, you know, it's. Close to $3 million difference. So that's where we're at on the projection. Um, if we insert these 20, 20 and 2021 numbers into our fund balance projections. Uh, this is what it looks like. So. These are fun balance predictions. The, uh, what, what I mean by fund balance is money in the bank, cash that we have. So these are not revenues. These, these are fund balances. And um, this blue line is pre-pandemic. And the reason it started going down right here is because we took out the. I-976 revenue. Otherwise we would have, it would have stayed flat. But then even pre-pandemic, as you all know, we were headed in a downward trend. And this combines. These fund balances combined three funds, street fund, general fund and strategic opportunities fund. It does not include the rainy day fund. So starting out at just a little over 8 million. But with these, with the projections that we have for 20 and 21. You can see that we dropped down to zero quicker. And then um, in 2022. We, for lack of better data, we assume that things get back to normal in 2022. So that's kind of a rosy. Number, a rosy dot on the graph. If we want to be a little more pessimistic about that, then it would, the whole thing would shift down a little bit. Uh, and then this, and then based on this, we run out of cash in these funds. In 2024. So. So that's, that, that kind of makes things more urgent and the financial sustainability plan. You know, we were on this path and we were going to try to fix this line so it would flatten out. And now we've got a bigger job to do and we've got to do it faster. Okay, so. Strategy moving forward, um, you know, with only eight months left in the year. Cutting 1.7 to 1.9 million is going to be a difficult task. But that said, we have really amazing people working in this organization and. The, the departments all put their heads together over the last few weeks and uh, just. I'm going to jump ahead here a little bit, but they've been able to um. Cut just about 1.1 million dollars out of the general and street funds in what I call discretionary spending. Um, and they had to dig deep and they had to get creative, but they were able to do that. That's kind of the spoiler. Now let me go back to our strategy. In this emergency situation, the top priority is to protect our organization. Doing so will allow us to better serve the community and be a healthy organization when the economy recovers. And in this context, we protect the organization in two main ways. Number one, preserve our cash position. Number two, protect our city employees. So to do these things, I'm taking a two phased approach. Phase one is cut discretionary expenditures down to essential services this year. In 2020 and um, I need to define two terms here. Discretionary means contracts, supplies, consultants, equipments. Travel, that's that sort of thing. That doesn't touch employees or doesn't touch our public safety contracts. And then essential services are outlined here in these bullets, public safety. Basic transportation, state and federal mandates and preserving other basic, basic infrastructure. Now let me make an important point here and that's down here at the top of page six. While discretionary were expenditures, keyword discretionary are being cut to essential services in this phase. Staffing levels are not being cut down to essential services because we're maintaining our staffing level. And so the good news there is a lot of our coworkers are still, are still with us. And they're able still to provide a lot of the services and do a lot of things towards council goals. Um, despite the cuts in discretionary services. So that's our strategy and, and with phase one, like I said, we've cut about 1.1 million. Phase two is to now be in a holding pattern. Okay, now we've done phase one. But let's be in a holding pattern for a couple of months because we just don't have good information right now. We haven't gotten any sales tax figures. We don't have any good economic indicators. So let's be in a holding pattern for a couple of months and after we have some good data under our belts, then let's make some additional decisions. So under the guidance of phase one, like I said, we've cut um, 1.074 million. In discretionary expenditures for the remainder of this year. And I think that's pretty good, given the fact that we only had eight months left. But I ca, I need to point out that those weren't easy. That, that's just not, those weren't cuts that we could just, oh yeah, let's get rid of this. We had to actually think about and make some cuts that are um. Unprecedented in, uh, in a couple of cases. One is which, one of which is those, uh, the summer events. So um. If we can, if we just, this graph here shows that. If we just make the one time cut of 1.074 million. And don't even make any cuts in 2021, which we will need to. But if we just make the one turn, one time cut in 2020, it buys us this much more time, this middle green graph. Buys us this much more time and helps, help us, helps us. So just even a, a $1 million cut like this helps the situation. Here's a summary of the 1.074 million and where they came from in each department. I apologize in advance, um, we're cutting some money from the city council's budget. We were conservative in some consulting services in the city council budget. And we're finding that those just aren't needed. So we're taking those out of the council budget. That was the main thing there. Uh, so also some um, travel related costs. I'm proposing that we cut um, overnight travel for the rest of the year. Citywide. Um, city manager's office, uh, we were able to cut this much. Uh, you, you remember we have events and recreation programs and economic development services and public communications and all these things that we do in the city manager's office. And so we um, were able to trim. Things uh, from the Keny, Kenmore Business Incubator or uh, reducing some consultants altogether. Um, like the Public Affairs Consultant, also the federal lobbyist. By July 1st. Um, and also um, most of the events are being canceled. For the rest of the year, where our hope and the city manager's office, we are holding out hope that we can do two concerts. In late August. But I don't give that a ton of hope, but, but we'll see. And so we are reserving a little bit of money for two concerts in late August. And you can see here in the, in these paragraphs, some of the other cuts we're making. We're um, not going to be doing uh, the banners on 522 this year. And um, we're going to be transferring responsibility of landscape maintenance. Um, on some of our arterial roads to adjacent property owners. That's going to take some letter writing on our behalf. But um, it, it is already established in city code that property owners are supposed to take care of the right of way in front of their property. Um, so we're going to be sending letters saying, hey, these are tough times. Um, and you as property owners need to take on that responsibility like the rest of the city does. Um, and we're going to try to soften that a bit with uh, maybe a, a pooled. Service of uh, community volunteers who might be um, able to help those who are less able to take care of their frontage on their properties. We will, we're not canceling the landscape contract along 522, however, that's the one arterial contract that we're going to be keeping. Another thing that we're eliminating, this isn't really even by choice, but even if it wasn't, we'd still might cut it. And that is the CWP workers. I always call them CWP, but I can't remember what CWP stands for, but it's the, uh, the county's corrections. Uh, county work program? Maybe that's what it sees.
Community, community work program.
Community work program. Thank you. Uh, those are um, in Department of Corrections. Um, low level offenders that can work off some of their time by doing landscape maintenance. They've, they've shut down completely and I doubt that they'll be putting seven or eight people in a van anytime soon. Um, and they did a lot to maintain right of way on wanting to drive in other arterials. So. I'll just stop there. I want to talk a little bit about federal funding and the, the financial sustainability plan, but any questions for me on what I've covered so far?
Questions? Let's go down the line. Uh, Councilmember O'Kane.
No questions. I do want to thank you, um, manager Carl Lindsay for the detailed work and preparation you put into this and. I love your um, strategic direction tool that you use at the opening of your meetings. It really stands out. It's almost something I want to copy at my office. So anyway, thank you.
Councilmember Marshall.
No questions.
Councilmember Curtis.
So I had a question on the um, uh, budget reduction or increase list there. Can you explain a little more the finance administration legal, the increased cost? Yeah, I guess to me it would help if that was. You're reading a little too asterisk. It, it sounds like it's two pieces. In some areas we might save a little money and in other.
Yeah, it is kind of all grouped together, but um, there, yeah, there's two main components. It's information technology costs and then it's also legal. Uh, we've been using um, a lot of special attorney services like for the franchise agreement and enforcement and things like that. Um, what's not shown here are the additional revenues that these legal settlements are going to be bringing in. Um, so like the um, the frontier. Uh, legal settlement that we got, the, the Puget Sound Energy franchise agreement that Nancy was able to negotiate and also. You know, they were, they're supposed to pay our negotiation fees. That check's coming in. Brian Hampson was able to get a, Brian Hampson and our legal team were able to get a, a legal judgment on a. Um, code enforcement case of 100 grand. And 50 of that has come in. So there's pieces like that that are kind of offsetting these higher costs on the legal, but it's just not shown on the expense side.
So you've put those in already, the, that money that's coming in from the one-time uh, events?
You don't see it on this line, but you do see it up in our revenue projections up here.
Okay.
Yeah. So, but we have to, we have to account, you know, for the expenditures here. So. But we've uh, used a lot more information technology services than we had budgeted. And uh, more G I, the GIS geographic information system fees have been higher than we thought. Um, so those are the main reasons why, but I'm happy to get you a breakdown.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Uh, no questions. I thought this was, you know, very thorough and very strategic and really appreciate, you know, the leadership team. Facilitating the process to get to the cuts. It's, it's great. I mean, the cuts aren't great, but the, you know, the, the strategy and um. You know, preserving the essential services and, and as much as the community services as we can is great.
Councilmember File.
I have nothing to add, uh, nothing more that our councilmembers um, and colleagues haven't already shared. So thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I want to thank Rob for putting all this together. I know this couldn't have been an easy exercise and um. These weren't easy decisions. Uh, I'm aware to make these cuts. There is one place where I think we might want to consider um. Actually adding some funding. Because we do have a lot of special more vulnerable populations are being hit particularly hard right now by the pandemic. Uh, people losing their jobs. We're seeing just unprecedented unemployment right now. And I want to give Rob and his staff the flexibility to. Respond to more human services requests um, that may come in because of all of this. And I'm actually interested in having a quick discussion around uh, if council supportive of maybe putting other $50,000 into the human services budget. To deal with um, with things that may pop up uh, in the community over the next few months because of uh, the pandemic. Um, so I just want to toss that out there if anybody else is interested. Um, I'd love to have a discussion about it.
Are you making a motion?
We sure, yes, I'll make a motion to, to add $50,000 to the human services budget um, for Rob or his designated to um. To spend as they see, you know, I, as they see fit. I just want to give them some flexibility in case things pop up without us having to have a council meeting about it.
I'd second that.
All right, moved and seconded. To uh, give Rob the authority of uh, adding 50,000 to human services budget. Um, any further discussion?
I have a question.
Pardon?
I guess I don't understand how that works. If we're 1.7 million short, we've made up 1 million approximately. We're still 700,000 short. How does adding 50,000 help this problem?
I think they're two separate problems. We have our city's budget problem, which is one thing, but we also have the um. The problem that our, a lot of our residents are going to be facing with uh, losing work, not to be, not be able to afford food. You know, not having access to some of the basic things that help people survive. And I think that's part of. And uh, and have the resources available for folks if they need it.
All right, any further discussion?
Mayor Councilmember Marshall has his hand up.
Uh, Councilmember Marshall.
Yes, uh, city manager, what sorts of projects might you, might you just generally anticipate that uh, that if we approve this, you could use that on?
Oh, rental assistance for sure. Um, a group like Hope Link provide that. And I have a feeling that uh, that's, that. Is a request that's going to be flooding the system here if it hasn't already.
Obviously not, not directly from the city, but through what a. Obviously, not not directly from the city, but through one of our social service organizations.
Yeah, like Hope Link, yeah. Kelly, our city clerk, Kelly Chellin, our city clerk is actually administers the program. Kelly, what else would you predict would come in?
Grocery gift cards. We already did give some extra funding to the North Shore School Foundation to help with that. Daycare costs. Supplies for Mary's Place. I'm sure Rob has already mentioned this, but we did give an extra 5,000 to Mary's Place, an extra 10 to Hope Link, 10,000 to Hope Link, and 3,000 to North Shore School Foundation. They're extremely grateful for that, and they're going to keep in contact with me as as they may need more as we get online.
Thanks.
Yep.
Well, I'm certainly understanding of that. I'm just curious. How do we get around the the regulation of not gifting funds? If we're giving money, what are we getting in return?
We would hold people to the same standards that we do on our other human services agreements.
Okay. Any further?
And we would also.
I'm sorry.
We would also require that that it benefits Kenmore as we always do.
Okay, you're you're looking then for rent and that for individual renters? Or are you looking more organizational?
It could be a number of different needs the community has. I think rental assistance is going to be one utilities assistance will be another. I think it's difficult to predict predict all the ways people are going to need help. So if you could keep it general, I I think it would probably be the best way to go right now.
Well, yeah, I agree, but I'm just wondering, how do you get around gifting again with individuals?
Oh, we wouldn't be giving to individual people at all.
Okay.
We'd be giving to organizations.
Got you. All right.
Another comment?
Yes, Councilmember Curtis.
So I like the idea of using the established pathways that we already have for distributing the human services like Hope Link. So I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, that's what we intend to do.
All right, any other questions? I'm only seeing four, so if there's other people that have their hands up, then please let me know. If there are no further questions, the motion before us is to authorize the city manager to an additional fifty thousand dollars for human service funding. We have a motion and a second. The clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Marshall.
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Kane.
Yes.
Councilmember File.
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbie.
Yes.
All right, that motion passes unanimously.
Your Honor, is it okay if I continue?
Certainly.
Okay, so potential fund funding, federal funding, this first this first paragraph talks about the 150 million of the Corona that's coming from the, I'm sorry, the 150 billion nationwide that's coming from the coronavirus relief fund under the CARES Act. And the state of Washington is going to get 1.9 billion of that. And we just received word from the governor's office today, and the state legislature has 10 days to react to this. But we just received word from the governor today that the state is going to share 300 million of that with cities. And that the minimum any city will get is 25,000. And for Kenmore, don't. Spent on COVID related expenses. So it can't be used for loss revenue, and that's obviously where we're going to take the biggest hit. But we could see 2 to 300,000 dollars of pandemic related expenses. Even like this additional human services funding that you just approved tonight, I think could qualify for that and be and fit in that category. I probably even should have mentioned that before you voted on that, but. So that's good news from the state counties, the what I call the big five also get some of this coronavirus relief fund money, the big five, meaning the four big counties in Washington and the city of Seattle. Combined, those big five get 1.3 billion. And so the county is going to get King County is going to get a share of that 1.3 billion. And we're also asking the county to share some of that with cities. I think I think the county is going to have a lot of its own costs that it's going to have to account for because it really bore the brunt of of this pandemic as far as all the health department and other, you know, the the healthcare needs and the quarantine sites and everything that got that the county had to set up. But I think they could perhaps share some of the some of their their share with the city. So also, we're hearing news that the Congress may consider aid for state and local governments in the next stimulus package. Not holding my breath on that, but if they do, we're hearing that it could be anywhere between 1 million and 2 million dollars for Kenmore. While this is encouraging, it's less of a slam dunk than the CARES Act was. There appears to be some partisan differences on whether the federal government should be helping cities. But even if a future federal stimulus package included direct financial aid to Kenmore, I'm saying that we still need to make these revenue, I mean, these expenditure cuts that I just described to you tonight. I don't think we should let up on them because we just don't have a lot of information. We don't know how bad this is going to be or how long it's going to last. And I think that we should use any federal funding to backstop our declining reserves. We did check in with the Financial Sustainability Plan Task Force. What a wonderful group of people they are and willing to just be so helpful and supportive. We told them to just take a break right now where while we are in this holding pattern. And that will probably be reconvening reconvening them probably in the late summer, early fall to help us pick up where we left off. Well, pick up where we left off is the wrong term. Because where we left off with them, everything was great. Or I mean, a lot better than it is now. But they all agree. So so you may recall, they were going to be wrapping up right about now and giving us recommendations on a long term financial sustainability about this time. And they they assumed their jobs would be over by end of April, early May. Well, we asked them if they could stay on for the end of the year, and they all said they'd be willing to do that. So that is very kind of them. We're really grateful that they're willing to do that for us. Priority based budgeting still needs to be a point of reference, although right now during this emergency situation, the priority has shifted more heavily to protecting the organization. But I anticipate PBB will make a strong comeback later this year. Other funds in the budget, just to make sure we haven't forgotten the capital revenues, the revenues that are restricted for capital use only. We're worried about those. And that's the other shoe to drop. Real estate excise tax and the two impact fee revenues, those are likely to drop. We have a little bit more time to look at those because we don't have all of our capital projects all of a sudden being built right now. If we absolutely had to, if if REIT and impact fees totally dried up, which they won't. But if they did, we could probably even fund the wanting to drive project solely with bond revenues. Again, I'm not saying we should or will, but I'm just saying that we have time to wait and see what REIT and impact fees are going to do. And then we do have a bit of good news in that the surface water management utility. It's it's its own self sustaining, be supported enterprise fund. And its revenues are stable like property taxes because of the way we collect them under state law. So it's not likely to see a dramatic drop in the surface water fund. So we haven't made cuts to the surface water fund like we have in the street and the general funds. So just in conclusion, you can see my conclusion here. Super heartbreaking times right now. It's such a sad day when we have to cut things like events and and banners on five twenty-two and other things like that. At the same time, though, well, we still have a lot of resources to do a lot of good work for the community. And we have a lot of amazing staff that are just chomping at the bit to get back to City Hall. And I've been so pleased with how they've been able to stay as productive as they can at home, but they just they want to be productive like they used to be. So I'm just so grateful for them. And I couldn't be more encouraged by what I'm seeing in in the health of my organization and the health of this community. When I mean health of the community, what I mean is more the emotional civic health. So. But I just want to thank you, the City Council, for all of your support and vision on this and and also my coworkers for being so creative, working so hard to dig deep and find budget savings. And with such an amazing team, I know we've got this. Thank you.
Questions? Let's go down the line. Councilmember O'Kane.
No questions. Thank you.
Member Marshall.
No questions. Thank you, City Manager.
Councilmember Curtis.
It feels like the word resiliency fits what the city is doing and what you're doing. These are hard times, and yet you're bouncing with it, you're flexing with it, you're being creative how to solve the problem. You're not waiting it for for it to run us over, but trying to get ahead of it. So thank you.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yeah, I concur. Thank you for great presentation and thoughtfulness.
Councilmember File.
No questions. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
No questions. Appreciate the work, Rob.
Yeah, I really appreciate your work in getting all this information together. Mr. Carlin, you 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 really put together a compelling story. And I've been working with our federal delegation, and I'm so thankful for the relationships we've made with key staffers over the years in looking for this fourth stimulus package and making sure that if it does come to pass that cities are definitely included. And I know I've heard rumors it'll be cities above 50,000 population, but there really needs to be concerted effort and energy expended to make sure the smaller cities are included also. So I do really appreciate your putting this together. Also, I'm on a call with the governor later this week. And these figures are going to be extremely helpful. So thank you very much. And I appreciate all the time and effort you and staff put into this.
You're welcome.
All right.
Your Honor, can I say one more thing? Nancy Owseley got a call from Washington State Parks today, and St. Edward State Park is going to open up on Tuesday, the fifth.
And that includes the playground, right?
Don't know. I doubt it.
Okay.
Yeah, the details of what is actually open in the park are going to be forthcoming. But the park in general is opening up on on May 5.
Wonderful. All right. Councilmember comments, reports, initiatives. Councilmember O'Kane.
I have nothing to report today, but thank you.
Councilmember Marshall.
Nothing to report. I want to thank everybody.
Councilmember Curtis.
I have an observation. Those council chairs, I'm never going to complain about them again. So much more comfortable for a three hour meeting than the one I'm sitting in right now.
Yes, indeed. Councilmember Shrubnik.
Ditto, yeah. No other comments.
Councilmember File.
Yes, thank you. Well, you know, I wanted to raise a kind of an issue of what we're looking at with our Kenmore COVID crisis, why our numbers are have gone a little up slowly in our county where we said we kind of hit a, as we were swinging down in our bill or we kind of hit a plateau, but it's not coming down low enough. So I do see our community out a little bit more. I think we need to ensure that we are supporting our community, wearing masks and staying in to help those numbers fall down a little lower. I think right now we have see a little bit of our community feeling a false sense of safety. And we're not quite there yet. And I think that needs to continue to be a message that we're working on is to ensure our public health. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I have one thing that I want to bring up quickly and I want to thank Rob for his leadership during this crisis. He's been super proactive and trying to be forward thinking to protect our residents and businesses through the pandemic in particular. I really appreciate the eviction moratoria that we've put into effect. But I think there might be a piece missing as it relates to the moratorium. And that's that at the end, once the emergency is lifted and the moratorium are go away, all the back rent will be due possibly the following day or the following first of the month. I'm not sure exactly how it's how it's spelled out, but it becomes due fairly quickly. And I want to have a discussion about, you know, maybe at our next meeting, but I want to bring up now just to put it out there. Like have a discussion about allowing renters to have some amount of time after the emergency is lifted. I would propose six months to pay off all back rent to so that people. My worry right now is that we're setting things up is that we've stopped the immediate problem of being people being kicked out of their homes during the crisis, and we've pushed it back to when the moratorium ends, all of a sudden, we're going to have a backlog of evictions that are all going to happen at once. And I think we all realize that if somebody's been out of work for the last couple of months and hasn't been able to pay rent, they're not magically going to be able to pay rent as soon as this thing is over. And I worry that we're going to be facing a kind of wave of homelessness or people being displaced relatively quickly after this if we don't put something in place. I know some other cities are also looking at at ways to protect folks who might be in that in that situation. And so I'd like to have a discussion about you know, and this would require legal to look at it and things like this, but I'd like a discussion around putting some sort of safeguard at the end of the moratorium so that people aren't immediately ejected from housing as soon as we're through the woods on this entire thing. I know I would need somebody else to want to have the discussion, and I'm not proposing that we wade through all of the details right now. But if anybody else is interested in this discussion, I'd like to maybe have it brought to another meeting and have legal work on a little bit and see if there and there might be something in one of the governor's many proclamations on this too that may address some of that. I'm not sure because there's been too many for me to keep track of.
I agree with you. I'm I I agree. I think we need to have this discussion.
I agree too. Yeah, I I agree. My understanding is at the state level, they actually if you can show that your inability to pay rent is due to COVID, that it's not collectible at the end. So that, I mean, essentially.
It's not evictable, though. It's still it's not collectible, but it doesn't mean that they couldn't still file. As far as I understand, it doesn't mean that they couldn't still you know, move forward with eviction on somebody immediately.
Oh, okay.
I could be wrong. This is a question I'd like to get answered.
Yeah.
Better idea of what people are facing because, you know, I don't think it's particularly clear right now. There's just something I've been thinking about.
I can agree with that plan to move forward on that.
All right.
Rob, could we have, could we have asked somebody do some digging in that a little bit and bring it up at a relatively at a meeting coming up soon?
Yeah, you've got four people that are agreeing with it, so.
Okay. Yeah, I think the next chance for you to meet is May 11. Although we we need some additional OPMA guidance beyond May 4, so we're hoping that we get to get some from the state. But yeah, May 11, is that okay? It's given that you've extended the moratoria through June 4.
Yeah, that'd be fun. Thank you.
So I've been continuing my efforts of working with our federal and state delegation. We had a great meeting with the state delegation today where the financial situation in the city was thoroughly discussed. You know, I just can't state enough times how fortunate we are to have the legislators that we have. You know, I just can't state enough times how fortunate we are to have the legislators that we have. I am really, really concerned with the census and the possible redistricting that we're going to lose them. And that would be devastating to the city because there's such a great rapport that we have that's built up over time, not only with legislators, but with their staff. I mean, we have one of David Rock's former staff that's now on the Seattle City Council. So it's really good to have these relationships and know these people. It's beneficial for all of us. And so I really have a concern and I'm hoping that things work out for us, that we keep our legislators. But in the meantime, I'm out there with the, with our staff and delegation, both federal and state, trying to ensure that Kenmore is not forgotten. Is there any other business to come before us? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.